Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Lord, please guide us today to do what the people of Wood County need done and that we work together to make this happen for them. Let us use kind words and deeds to get this accomplished for them. Lord, watch over our county and protect us from harm. Keep our local, state, and national protective services in your heart, guiding and protecting them. Amen.
Is there any pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Superintendent Hamilton, and glad everybody made it here this morning. Glad to see all of you. It's not raining at the moment. It'll probably start shortly, but try to wrap this up before it does. First order of business is the minutes from the previous meeting, and I motion by Hamilton to approve. I have a second by, oh, I think it was Lightman had his hand up second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and then the motion carries. We have an excusal of Supervisor Han today, and that's noted on the board. We have no resignations today. Is there any objection to taking the appointments together? Okay, we have a couple of appointments today for terms ending April 2027 to the Health and Human Services Committee of citizen members, Dr. Kristin Iniguez and Leslie Kronstadt, and to the State Wildlife Advisory Committee for a three-year term, Donald Smutsner and Jill Wincler. I have a motion by Laura Ballenstein, Supervisor Ballenstein, and a second by Lightman. Is there any discussion? Again, all in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any public comment today? Is there any public comment? I'm trying to kill a few minutes because they say a county board meeting should run at least fifteen, so I'm checking that. One of the things with that, you know, I'm really proud of, and I think our board is, is when we have the ability to recognize those departments or department heads or elected officials for an accomplishment. And this morning, our own Child Support Director Brett Throwing again was recognized for receiving the Federal Fiscal Year 2023 Certificate of Excellence. And the statistics you need to accomplish this are pretty phenomenal, and I don't want to rain on his parade or talk over what he might do, but you need paternity establishment of over ninety percent, court order established of rate over eighty, collection rate over eighty percent, and arrears case collection over eighty percent, which is phenomenal. Because we have an epidemic, not only in this state, but in this county of children who need that support. And Brett does a fantastic job of providing that service through his department in our county. So with that, Brett, I'd ask you to please come forward. I have nothing actually to hand you because you've gotten this before, but Brett had a family issue last month. We wanted to present this, but I wanted to put this up so he had the ability to speak to all of you. Thanks, Brett.
Thanks, Chairman Plummel, for the kind words, and this truly is a team effort amongst my staff, and it's something that isn't easily achievable. You know, the seventy-one child support agencies in the state, twenty were able to achieve this milestone and these measures, so that puts us clearly in the top twenty-five percent of child support agencies in the state. With, you know, every county has different demographics, different things to work with. And the way Wisconsin runs the child support program, it's county administered. Some states run a statewide program, some divided up different ways. And so the county model really seems to be the most efficient. It gives counties an opportunity to really understand their demographics, the folks that they're working with, the people they're trying to serve, and really gives them the ability to tailor a program to serve the folks in their community. And so, but also the county board, Chairman Plummel, my oversight committee, for giving us the ability to run the kind of program that we need to run to be able to serve the families. Also, our state legislators, the governor's office, and a recent budget, given us the financial tools that we need to be able to maintain staffing and do the things that we need to do so we can achieve excellent performance in Wood County. We've been able to do it by changing things around. A number of years ago, we added the Elevate Program, which is an employment and training program. Five counties in the state run that program. Wood County is one of them. We had to submit our F P to be approved for that. We were. And so that program helps folks that maybe want to pay their child support but can't find employment, so we're able to bring them into our department, help them with the support they need to be able to find employment so they can pay their child support. That's been something that's been helpful to us, our customers, the children that we serve as well. But this really goes to my staff, the team that I work with. We've been fortunate to be able to hire folks and keep them around without having turnover. And turnover is something that really impedes operations. So we've been able to keep long-term employees, give them training, give them the training they need so they can excel in their job, get to know their caseload, the people they're working with, and I think that really makes a difference. Also, having the same attorney, Corporation Council, for a long period of time has been very helpful. Some attorneys can be very restrictive in how things are interpreted and worked with. For the most part, Corporation Council Castenholz is excellent to work with. He's a very good mentor to my staff as well, giving them good advice on how to achieve positive outcomes. So, thank you very much.
Super, I appreciate it. All right, we're going to have a special order of business today once we get through the packet. That's from M S A. It'll be done by Dan Connect, who most you probably know from Marshfield already. He will be making that presentation once we get through all the regular orders of business here. So going into the packet, on page five, you have referrals for June, and there was an updated comprehensive plan that was forwarded, our planning and zoning office in Jackson County. I talked to Jason the other day. I wasn't sure if that was something required or something they did as a courtesy, and apparently those are required. So I learn something every day as well. All right, moving forward, page six and seven in the packet, Operations Committee meeting of June 11th. And then we have Monthly Letter of Comments from the County Clerk on eight and nine. So we move to page ten, and it runs through fourteen, ten to fourteen. The Monthly Letter of Comments from the Human Resources Department. And I think one of the phenomenal things there's, you know, almost nine hundred applications received to date. So when you look at the volume, the amount of application they go through the office are phenomenal. Moving forward, page fifteen, Monthly Update from the Treasurer's Office. Page sixteen, Employee Wellness. And then I get to the Health and Human Services Committee meeting, their meeting of May 23rd on pages seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. I have North Central Community Action on page twenty to twenty-two. We have a monthly update from the Health Department, which begins on page twenty-three and runs through page twenty-six. Then a monthly update again from the Human Services Department, beginning with Director Bruings on page twenty-seven, and that runs through page thirty-three. The Veteran Service Officers Report begins on thirty-four. There's a fair amount of information included in there for you to peruse. I'm not going to go through it, but pages thirty-four to thirty-nine, thirty-four to thirty-nine. And then that would bring us to the first resolution in the packet. That's on page forty, and I would ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution twenty-four dash six dash one, to create two F T E child, children's support and service coordinator positions. Fiscal note, anticipated wages and benefits based upon grade age step two with effective start date of July first of this year, total seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents.
Motion by Hamilton and second by Bri. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? I'd ask you to please vote. And that resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, as we move forward, Public Safety Committee minutes forty-one and forty-two, their meeting from June tenth. The Traffic Safety Commission meeting, their meeting from March thirteenth, forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five. And then we have the Monthly Update from the Sheriff's Department, beginning on page forty-four, or forty-six, I'm sorry, forty-six, and that runs to sixty-six, forty-six to sixty-six. Page sixty-seven in your packet begins the minutes of the C E D meeting from May first, and that's sixty-seven, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine. We have an update from U W Extension, beginning on seventy, and it runs through page seventy-four, seventy to seventy-four. Land and Water Conservation, their monthly update, beginning on seventy-five, and it runs through eighty-one, seventy-five to eighty-one. The update, Monthly Update for Planning and Zoning, beginning with Director Guneberg on eighty-two, and it runs through eighty-five, two to eighty-five. And that brings me to the J and L minutes on page eighty-six. And we've got their minutes, and a little bit unusual, we don't do this a lot, but there's going to be a motion coming through the floor in regard to a little bit of a change in the Register and Probate's office as far as hours of positions. This was handled at the committee. The resolution wasn't prepared in the timing manner. It does not require an extraordinary vote, it's a simple majority. And I believe I have one of the gentlemen from that committee who's going to make that motion. Supervisor Lightman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a minor proposed change to staffing the probate department, and I feel from what we heard in J and L, it's totally fiscally responsible. The change would be this, that probate would go from four budgeted positions down to three, and that's totally within the realm of probate's ability to handle all the work that they've been signing. But then the two remaining positions, which are, let me have a second here, the Deputy Register in Probate and the Legal Administrative Assistant. Terry, is that right?
No.
Okay. Their time would be increased to forty hours per week from thirty-eight point five. And as I said before, there's sufficient funds to do that. This seems to be a prudent thing to do. So I would make a motion then to that effect.
I have a second by Service Department. Again, does that require an extraordinary vote? It is a, because it is in the budget. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask for clarification. Is the, so just the two positions going from point nine seven to one point oh?
Yes.
And not the registered, the registered probate is already there?
Is already there.
Thank you.
Supervisor Clendeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, and any, stop next page here. Just to get the data.
Clearly, I have motion, I didn't have a paper. Supervisor Rosen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the decrease from four to three, is that being done by attrition, or is someone losing their job or being laid off?
I'm going to have to ask Terry to answer the question.
That position is currently open. We had someone leave our department a few months ago, so we've been running a few months with just three employees, and that's what helped make my decision on this.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? We're going to go to the board on this vote. Without any further discussion, and I'd ask you to please vote. And that resolution passes eighteen zero. All right, moving back to the J and L minutes, like I said, a little bit unusual. I can't remember doing this more than a handful of times in many, many years, but occasionally happens. So their minutes again, eighty-six to eighty-eight. We have a number of claims invoices, beginning on eighty-nine, that run through page ninety-three. And then we have the updates from those departments. They oversee the Child Support Agency on ninety-four, the Clerk of Courts on ninety-five, our Court of Counsel on ninety-six, Register and Probate ninety-seven, the Register of Deeds Office on ninety-eight. Takes us to the minutes of the Hur Committee. Their minutes of June sixth begin on ninety-nine and run through one oh two, ninety-nine to one oh two. Page one oh three with the Accounting Supervisors Report, and those run one oh three through one oh six, one oh three to one oh six. We have the Monthly Report from the Parks Department, beginning on one oh seven, and that runs through one twelve, one oh seven to one twelve. And that brings us to another resolution in the packet. I'd ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution twenty-four dash six dash two, to authorize out-of-state travel for the Highway Commissioner. Fiscal note, two thousand dollars for travel expenses.
Clendeney and Breen. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? I ask you to please vote. And again, that resolution passes eighteen zero. Thank you. Moving forward in the packet, minutes of the P I P Committee, Property Information Technology, one fourteen and one fifteen, their minutes are made from first. We have minutes from the same committee on page one sixteen and one seventeen, and those are from June third, one sixteen and one seventeen. And then we have the Monthly Update from Information Technology, begins on one eighteen and runs through one twenty-three, one twenty-two. Page one twenty-four, we have Monthly Letter of Comments from our Facilities Manager, Ruben Van Teeso, who, as you can see, has been pretty busy as you look at the progress on the jail out there, amongst other projects. If you walk down the hall, you'll also see our Branch One courtroom is under construction. We have the February Minutes from the University Commission on one twenty-five and one twenty-six. And I have the Jail Construction Ad-Hoc Committee Minutes from May twenty-first on one twenty-seven and one twenty-eight. And then, I'm going to run this now, and then we'll go into the special order of business and the other stuff. We have a final resolution in the packet, and I'd ask the clerk to please read that resolution.
This will be Resolution twenty-four dash six dash three, related to the life and public service of Dennis Scholhauser.
A motion by Sir, or a second by Rosar. There's a number of us who had the opportunity to serve with Supervisor Sir Scholhauser for many, many years, and I was looking back, and I realized now that I'm probably at the age that a lot of these people were when they served with me. And I've told this story many, many times, but at this point in time, the members of the committee at that time, most of whom passed away, Don Melville, some of you remember, Kenny Josephson, Dennis Scholhauser, Bob Ashpeck also served on that committee. I've told the story many times, but as I realize I'm getting older, not younger, we were up in Powers Bluff, and Ron Arpaio was our Parks Director, and Ron said, right now we're going to walk down, we're going to go get one of the tow lists at the bottom of the hill, and we're going to come back up and talk about it. And as we started walking down the floor, we sat down at the picnic table and said, you go walk down, come back up and report to us, see how that's going. So none of them made the trip down, and I realize I am now at that age. So some of you younger supervisors, as I look out there, and there's a number of you, you're going to be making a trip, and I'm going to be sitting at that picnic table. Danny was a valuable member of our county board for quite some time, served with distinction. And I just want to make a couple of comments. I don't know if there's anybody else who has a comment they want to make at this time. But, so before us, we have the resolution relating the public service of Dennis Scholhauser, and I'd ask that at this point, we stand in a moment of silence as we reflect this. And then, thank you. Please be seated. All right, next up, I don't know if my department has all on the state for this part. We have a special order of business. It's an M S A presentation on the Fairgrounds Expo Building Plan that they've been working on since Marshfield for a while, to see how they can make that a better facility and beneficial community to host more events than we currently host up there, and if we do host more in a much more effective and efficient manner. So you probably know the person in front of us, served at Marshfield forever and ever. Dan Mills with M S A, so. Dan, we'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. You've already been introduced. I appreciate being here today to present our final report to you on the study that's been done at the Marshfield Fairgrounds. It's kind of familiar with one of the street jitters. All right. All right, so what I wanted to cover today in the time we have is a brief introduction of why the project was undertaken, what the scope of that work was, the existing conditions on the site, which many of you are familiar with, the building conceptual floor plan that was prepared, and then the site plan options of where the building might fit on the site, some cost estimates, and then a final recommendation that we're presenting in the report. So initial introduction, why was the study done? It's no secret that managing a fairgrounds can be very difficult, financial struggle. Much of the success or not of fairgrounds is dependent on weather and frankly, the outcome of the Central Wisconsin State Fair. There are a number of other smaller events throughout the season there, but the fair is the number one event. And so Fair Board, Fair Commission, and other interested parties got together and said, we need to do something to promote the year-round use of this fairgrounds facility. They toured other fairgrounds throughout the state, looking for ones that operated well, and for ideas of what could be done on our fairgrounds to improve the year-round use of that site. And what they came upon was the idea of a large expo building there that could hold events year-round, a wide variety of events. So that was part of the first impetus of looking at a building on the site. In addition, there are existing buildings that are in need of repair beyond their useful life, no longer serving the purpose for which they were built. Several smaller buildings in close proximity that maybe have a similar square footage, but they're just not as efficient for large events as a large space will provide. Electrical infrastructure is an ongoing problem, the demands of the load that it's supposed to support during, especially during the fair, is just not keeping up with electrical load as that demand grows. So all these elements had led the groups involved to take a pause and say, what if? What if we had a large building on our site? What would it look like? Where would it go? How much would it cost? So the scope of this effort then was to develop the floor plan for the expo building, what would it include, including fair offices, identify three possible locations for that building on the site, prepare cost estimates for both site and building improvements, prepare a final report, which we're presenting to you today, and then update the Fairgrounds' Campus Master Plan with the proposed building location on it, so as the plan would evolve, the master plan would already reflect that future goal. The scope of work does not include a funding plan, and as you can imagine, there's a large price tag with a project like this, and that would have to be determined, how to fund a construction. And there's not a financial operating plan with this yet. It's really focused on building and site improvements. What would it look like? Where would it go? Where would it cost? So next, just wanted to talk a little bit about the existing conditions on the site. Many of you are familiar with that. It's a sixty-six acre site, seventy-five percent or so is owned by the city of Marshfield. The rest is owned by the Central Wisconsin State Fair Association. There's twenty-six buildings of varying sizes and conditions, the Round Barn being the signature building, most recognizable building on the site. The, has a variety of other things that you see on the slide there, softball fields, curling club, and youth hockey, a dog park, and other events are held throughout the year. But again, the Central Wisconsin State Fair in August is the primary event on the site. Many events that are held there are weather-dependent. That is always a factor in how successful those events can be. The next slide here is just a drawing, a map from the Campus Master Plan that shows the configuration of the site. The areas in purple are owned by the city, areas in green are by the Central Wisconsin State Fair Board. It's bounded by Fourteenth Street on the north, Twenty-first Street on the very south, Seventeenth Street bisects right through the east-west to the site. Peach Avenue is along the eastern perimeter, and then you see the western boundaries a little more irregular. The photograph of the site, you can pick out the Round Barn there in the lower middle. South of Seventeenth Street, the primary feature there is the Show Palace. Large animals are shown there, actually multiple varieties of animal shows appear there. Directly west of the Round Barn are the small buildings that I had mentioned, a variety of shapes and sizes and ages. The larger building, just a little bit further west, is the Hockey Building. Along the very western perimeter of the drawing are horse barns that are used on the fair and other horse shows throughout the year. You can see the softball fields on the right-hand side, and the building, uppermost building on the site is the Curling Club. Of course, there's a grandstand there, and just west of the grandstand is the existing expo building. So that's kind of the existing conditions. So the first question is, what would the building, what a new building looked like? What would be included in it? So the conceptual floor plan would be modeled after a building in Washington County, West Bend Fairgrounds, Washington County Fairgrounds in West Bend, that the group toured, had successful expo space in that building. Key features of this building would be the nineteen thousand square foot exhibit floor. Fair offices would be involved here, large front lobby, meeting rooms that could be breakout sessions, a full-service commercial kitchen, restrooms that can be used both internally and externally, mechanical and storage space, a gross square foot of thirty-six thousand, five hundred square feet. The layout of this would be, hopefully you can get a view of that, but basically the central exhibit floor space is nineteen thousand square feet around the perimeter. Then you have fair offices in one corner, meeting rooms, restrooms, mechanical spaces. The lower rounded portion is a large lobby, front entrance feature. The upper rounded area is a stage and hospitality area, loading dock that could be used for bringing equipment in for events and setup and vendors and so forth. The report goes on to show various layouts of how the floor space could be utilized for different types of events. This one shows a grid pattern for a breakout of ninety-six booths for a vendor show of some sort, ten by ten booths with aisles and space for setup of vendors. Another scenario is a banquet-type setting with round tables, could seat up to six hundred and thirty people. And then the largest event would be a concert or speaker-type event with chairs on the floor that could serve about nineteen hundred, nineteen hundred and fifty people with that type of setup. So those are the primary layouts that could be used. Of course, it could be used for a large variety of events, weddings and other shows and that kind of thing, but in order to get a sense of how big the building needed to be, these were the kinds of layouts that were discussed. So the next question is, what would the building look like? And the conceptual building elevations would be meant to complement the Round Barn, the other signature building on the site. As I mentioned, the round lobby entrance feature, high windows and a celestary, a ceiling height of up to fifty feet, which compares to the Round Barn at seventy feet, so not as tall as the Round Barn, but still a high structure. Exposed structural with timbers and then stone masonry on the front. So the rendering looks something like this. You can see the round entrance feature, a covered entryway, high windows that are complementary to the Round Barn, some sloped roasts that give a barn-like appearance to it, and then the flatter roast on the outside perimeter of the meeting room and fair office spaces. We have another one here that just shows a coloring, color rendering of it, with, again, some features similar to the Round Barn. Then I put a slide in here of what the Round Barn actually looks like, so you can see those comparisons of the similar features. The last slide then just shows a cutout or an elevation view, shows some elevations. The very peak, as I mentioned, is just over fifty feet, which allows for a high interior open area in the expo floor area, and then slope roast, flat roast for the meeting and fair office areas. Next question is, where would the building go? As I mentioned, the scope of work was to look at three possible locations on the site. We actually ended up with a slight variation of one of the options, so I'll show you more of. possible layouts here on the slides. First one would be to locate the building at the southwest corner of 17th and 17th Street and Peach Avenue intersection, that'd be directly to the east of the Gerald Lynch Show Palace. Let me just go to a bigger view here so you can see, in the lower right of the photo, that would be located south of 17th Street, basically straight south of the track area. Some of the features of this is the building would face north, accessed off of Peach Avenue and 14th intersection, parking directly around the building with a new parking lot north of 17th Street and that kind of arc shape. You probably can't pick it out on the drawing, but there's an orange circle on there that identifies 400-foot radius around the front entrance, which is kind of a target area for trying to keep parking close, or within that proximity for patrons who have to walk into the event and, kind of a goal. Parking target is four, based on four stalls for, excuse me, one stall for every four attendees at the maximum occupancy. I mentioned the concert seating at almost 2,000 people, four stalls per attendee, one stall for four attendees would be, 500 parking stalls is the target for a building of this size.
Did you say who owns that, the Arrow, Tom, or Chad?
Yes, this, this site is owned by the fairgrounds where this location is shown. The benefits of this first option are, it's built primarily green space, now minimal impact to existing fairgrounds facilities and/or operations. It's got good visibility and access to Peach Avenue, majority of the parking is around the perimeter of the building. There's additional city-owned land to the south, which will allow for future parking and snowmobile, snow storage, that kind of thing. Some challenges with this option are that fair offices that are going to be in this building, they're much further removed from the central fairground location, similarly to the restrooms and exhibit space is removed from the core of the fairground site, which was not, not an ideal situation for during fairtime. It interferes with the large animal uses on the south side of 17th Street, access to the Show Palace, there's also during fairtime, there's some large tents that get set up there just east of the Show Palace for llamas and goat exhibits. And during this discussion of, you know, this building concept, another thought emerged about developing a large animal campus on the south side of 17th Street to house cattle and other large animals that are showing at the Show Palace but are currently housed north of 17th Street. So during fairtime and other events, these animals are moving back and forth across 17th Street, so the discussion was that there might be a longer range plan to develop more barn space for large animals on the south side of 17th Street to the closer proximity to the Show Palace. One other deficiency in this site is that, or one other downside of this option is that it doesn't address any deficiencies in the existing buildings north of 17th Street. Covered the benefits and challenges, so we'll just move on to the next option. Site Plan Two would be to more centrally locate the new expo building in the heart of the fairgrounds, directly east of the current expo building, facing south. The entrance ends up being about 300 feet north of 17th Street, and you have parking directly in the front of the building. This does require relocation of some current animal barns, the no-barn, the beef barn, to the south side of 17th Street. If I go to expanded view here, you can see that this plan shows some new buildings in red there, kind of in the south, in the lower right of the photograph. One would be a bigger no-barn to accommodate the cattle that are currently housed north of 17th Street. And the smaller red building would be a llama slash goat building that could be used in the fair, a future consideration if that was desired. Benefits of this option two, let's see, impair myself here. So this option does remove other buildings, including the John Muir Storage Building, the Forge Building, and the Junior Fair Building, but it kind of, it would consolidate all those spaces into one large space which makes the more adaptable space for events. It does require the relocation of the horse arena, that's just to the left there, that brown rectangle left of the new expo building. Right now, the horse arena is oriented east-west, this would rotate at 90 degrees to make more room, but still keep it in close proximity to the horse barns. Benefits of this option, fair offices, the new exhibit space, and the restrooms are all be centrally located in the fairgrounds, so it would be a greater benefit to the fair itself. The new building really becomes that central focal point of the site in addition to the Round Barn. It removes several, several small buildings that are in need of repair and poor condition, and allows that room on the south side of 17th Street for this idea of a large animal complex campus on the south side of 17th. Some challenges with this option is that the building is less visible than option one, especially for events that are not tied to the fair. There's more advanced work to remove, relocate buildings within that footprint. It also requires the relocation of an overhead power line that runs north-south along Pine Avenue extended. There's also a water main in that area that would have to be relocated. This building would straddle the property line, the property ownership question came up before, this would fall right on the property line between the Central Wisconsin State Fair Association property and the city of Marshfield property, so a lot line adjustment of some sort would have to be handled. So, I'll move on. So during this discussion then, the question came up about, what if the Hockey Building were not there? I think we're aware that hockey folks have been looking for a new site for the Hockey Building, and there's potential that they will move offsite. So if the Hockey Building were not there, what additional parking could be generated? So we did look at, another scenario is if the Hockey Building were gone, and that was replaced with a parking, so in the lower left of this photograph, you can see a new parking stall, a parking lot there with about 255 stalls. Pros and cons of this particular site are similar to the other option two, except of course the cost is increased with the removal of the Hockey Building and a larger parking lot, and it does trigger some additional relocation of horse arenas. In this drawing or this rendering, the orientation of the new building was shifted a little bit to the front entrance, kind of aligned right with the Round Barn, and that triggered some additional of the horse arena relocation. Then the third option was looking at a similar location to the building but completely changing the orientation so that it faced north instead of south. And that would make use of the parking lot off of 14th Street as the primary parking lot, which is essentially today, that's the primary parking lot on the site. Some of the challenges with this option is that it's even further shielded from view on the outside of the site by the Curling Club Building, and again, it triggers the relocation of those horse arenas. And there's been some issues in the past with sand blowing off the horse arena and impacting the residential neighbors to the north, and that one could be an issue with this option. That's just the expanded view of this option three with the building facing to the northeast. So those were the options that we looked at for site locations, the final question is what will it cost? So, the report has a detailed cost estimate for each of the scenarios here, this was trying to just summarize the cost between the different, the four alternatives that we just reviewed. Won't go through all the numbers here today in the interest of time, but essentially, the cost ranged from 24 million to $27 million for a project of this size. I think it's a bigger number than most expected when this process was started, when you've been through the JAL project and you know all that, the cost of large buildings is very costly. The lowest cost alternative is the option one, which was on the southwest corner of 17th and Peach Avenue, less costly because we didn't have to relocate any other buildings before we could begin on that. The most costly was the option two A, which removed the Hockey Building and replaced it with parking, and of course that was more with additional parking and removal of the Hockey Building. Takeaways from this cost estimate are, it gives you a range of probable cost. At this early stage in the project, of course, there's a lot of decisions that would be made that would impact that final cost, but you can have a better feel for what magnitude of cost is for a project of this size. Just some report takeaways here that help us, lead us to our final recommendation. This is obviously a once-in-a-generation opportunity, maybe once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do something that transforms the fairgrounds. A new building of this magnitude becomes a central focal point. The functionality of this building can be enhanced by buildings that surround it. If you are looking at drawing larger events that need more space than what this new expo building can accommodate, additional buildings on this fairground site will benefit that. And then the emerging vision of a large animal campus on the south side of 17th Street would lead us to not occupy that space with this building. So the option that we would recommend out in the report is this site plan option two, which locates the new expo building in the core of the fairground site directly west of the existing expo building, facing south. And with the parking there, in this case, the drawing shows the Hockey Building remaining. If the Hockey Building were not a factor anymore, you could consider additional parking if you wanted to do it. Of course, the report has more detail than we were able to cover today, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Small-scale things, are you guys, are your plans are to remove amenities for campers then, like the dump station, the electrical site?
Yes, I think in part of the discussion here, camping was not seen as a high priority feature, oh, I know it's huge, but it was not seen as a high priority feature of the fairgrounds. The option one with the new building located east of the Show Palace, briefly preserved the camping and the dump station, all the other ones would impact that.
Around the barn, that's where the dump station is, and is a disrepair, so it would make sense to either upgrade it or get rid of it, or relocate it.
Right, yes, at this point, we didn't account for that in the new plan, but if that emerges as a priority as this plan evolves, it certainly could be added or relocated.
I was thinking, because the showers that use, you know, they bring their campers in.
I appreciate everything that you've presented here today, along with Supervisor Hulendick. I, having been involved with the fair so, for so many years, during the fair, the campground is packed. And what are the contingency plans for those campers? A lot of them are used by the, by whichever car rental comes, and a lot of them are used by exhibitors as well as people who bring animals for exhibits, and are, they're literally living at the fairgrounds for six days. We, if we're going to do something like this, there has to be some contingency for that fair week where these people can be, because there's not enough hotels in Marshfield to cover the number of people that are in the fairgrounds overnight.
I do think there is opportunity to add fairgrounds, campgrounds on the site, depending on which site location is chosen for the building. Obviously, if it's south of 17th Street, then current, current conditions are preserved. If it is in the center of the site and most campgrounds are impacted, then there may be an opportunity to add campground south of 17th Street somewhere. In fact, that was a conversation with Dale at one point, when the electrical problems came up about should we try to accommodate camping somewhere else than where it is today? So even though we haven't fully addressed that in this plan, I think there are options to handle camping on the site somewhere as this plan evolves.
Proximity to the animals is important, but my county clerk is always selling more his partner.
That's what I was going to say, we have wonderful.
So, you know, this conversation is just beginning, you know, and we, you know, one of the questions that we asked, well, you know, what can we do to enhance tourism in our county? And so, you know, as we start down this path, you know, we need some of these cost estimates, some of these answers. When this started, we said there'd have to be a huge public-private fundraising effort to do something like this, but you said the committee toured the Washington County Fairgrounds a lot, and that really is the model in the state. That is a positive cash flow center for the county, they turn a lot of dollars in that perspective. One of the things we've tried to grow over time is make that, the fair and the fairgrounds self-sufficient, so as we start down the path, so I'm sure you have a million questions, the floor plan was forwarded to you or it's in your, it's on the website anyway.
It's in documents.
It's in your iPads. It's a large document, so it's in your documents for reference in your iPads.
Tom?
Thank you. As Chairman of the Fair Commission, Jeff is on the committee, and one of the big needs is the office. I know Donna has been up in that office of steps.
Tom, can you, Tom, can you hear the microphone that Jeff carried you way up?
One of the big things is the fair office, there's only one way up, I don't know how many steps are, there are 20 or 30 steps, not handicapped accessible at all, and it's not, there's problems with that building, and that's not the only reason why that we need this expo building. But the fair is tougher to make a go, all fairs are, what it costs for entertainment and so on and so forth, so trying to get more events, and actually, there are a fair amount of events there off-season, but we, like Dan says, we want to enhance that so that we can have something going on there all the time, and Lance, you're right, it's going to bring revenue into the county. And it's, I know it's a big ticket item, and what I always say, I mean, it's just like the jail, you know, it turned out to be a bigger ticket than what we all thought, but my thing, being on the council and then on the county court, let's do it right. You know, whatever it is, I mean, I don't want to spend any more money than anybody else, but when you're spending a large amount of money, let's get it right. And I, I think we've got a good opportunity here to make the county better, because it's going to affect the other rapids and surrounding communities with that, so whatever comes out, we know the fundraising, you know, things are going to be an issue, but never say never.
Don't be mind if I use first names in this casual conversation, I hope. Donna, I think you were next.
Yeah, I just had a phone call.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think some of y'all may know that I was ticket supervisor for years and years at this fair, and I can't even tell you how many times I went up and down those steps in the administration building, and that has been a real, a real concern for a long time. As Tom said, that handicap accessibility. I, I wanted to ask you a question about, how many fairs like ours are located within city limits? I think we have a very unique situation where this 66 acres is right within our city limits, and, and I don't mean to throw this out, but has there, and the Round Barn absolutely is a big draw, has there ever been any conversation of moving the fairgrounds out of the city limits so that we could get a piece of property that we could really develop into a real, true fairgrounds? Or is that just absolutely an impossible ticket item that we could even discuss? I just, we're kind of like, an opinion.
I can say that in my time with the city and also during our discussion as part of this committee and plan development, that question did not come up. I felt, I feel like it pretty well established that that is the site for the fairgrounds, but could it be somewhere else? We did not investigate that at all.
We're just talking about being landlocked, I mean, 66 acres is a significant amount of property, but, you know, and so the discussion goes then how to use that as efficiently as possible. But I, I just am thinking, do you know of any other fairgrounds in the state that are located within the city? within the city limits?
Most of them.
Oh, most of them are?
A lot of county buildings.
Okay, well, then that kind of takes that discussion off the table.
Well, Donna, as we just go down this path to just discussion, you know, I look at this as a benefit to the fair. I don't know if we'll ever get there dollar-wise, but I look at it as a bigger benefit to the community way outside of what the fair does. When I look at how those, you know, we don't have a large facility in Wood County to house it and that. And I would think the fair, although the major operation there in the future, that may be a big event, but maybe not the biggest of that. I think that's one of the reasons they looked at the city possibly.
Yeah, and I think one of the, you know, we had this big Milwaukee Brewers package at the, in the state legislature, and one of the best things that I think we did with that package was to invest twenty-five million dollars to winterize that building for use other than just playing baseball. And so I absolutely agree that year-round, you know, that's a possibility, but then you talk about the numbers of people, maybe shuttling people in from another parking lot and things like that. So I think that one thing to sell this is to be as creative as possible in presenting the economic benefits to the, to Wood County and specifically to Marshfield, but it is a big ticket item, and I admire anybody that's going to hop on board to help raise that money, but very interesting. You alluded to it just a few minutes ago, because I was going to ask, how did this discussion get started? How did anybody go to NSA and say, you know, draw up these conceptual plans? And you addressed that a little bit. Can you expand on that a little bit?
No, I'm only, I kind of started with, geez, we need some stairs or a better way to get up to the office.
And I stopped painting supervisor because I could not go up those stairs anymore.
So basically, how those, and then we said, you know, what kind of building can we put up conducive to that? Wayne, I'll go to you and then Bill Condon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having basically lived at the fairgrounds when I was on the Board of Directors and served as President, looking at this number-two option, in my opinion, the John C. Lang building has water problems, heating and cooling problems every summer. That building has been used for decades for showers facilities, not just for the campground during the year, but during the fair, there's a lot of showers take place in that building every, every day. The junior fair building next to it has, I mean, we had my daughter's wedding reception and dance and dinner there, and it was beautiful. We dressed it up and it looked like a supper club. So it's possible to do that sort of thing, but that building also has a lot of mechanical, HVAC, lighting, heating, cooling stuff issues going on right now. And on down the line, the chicken and rabbit barn, the green John Deere shed, that, those buildings all are forty, fifty, maybe sixty years old. And this number-two option, yes, it's more expensive than number-one option, but it takes care of the immediate issues. If we were to build down in that southwest corner of Seventeenth and Peach under option one, those other buildings' issues are still there.
They're still there.
If we get this new building, which will replace those other buildings, those issues are gone, and the fair will not be coming back saying, we need money to fix these buildings and we need to do more fundraising. Yes, this is a huge undertaking, but as you said, Mr. Chairman, this is also something not just for Marshfield and certainly not just for the fair. But you get this big building up there, you could have a huge wedding, you could have an indoor car show, and at the south side of Seventeenth, once they get that campus developed, you could also be having a huge horse show or dairy show going on. I know the State Poulstein Breeders Association is begging to get out of Madison because the costs are so high. And yes, this is a big undertaking, but it's an investment in the county, not just the city of Marshfield, and not just the Central Wisconsin State Fair. Thank you.
Bill, Condon?
Yes, thank you. You know, I think it's great to have an expo building, and I think the Wood County Expo Building is great, but it seems like we're doing this to fix up all the old buildings. And I was on the fairgrounds, and not fairgrounds, but I was on the fair, when, eighteen years ago, and it was terrible to go up those steps and stuff like that, that was the bathroom for the fair. I thought, how ridiculous. Nobody ever talked about, let's remodel, let's tear it down. Because what we did, we did some work on the round barn and almost lost its setting because we were doing things we weren't supposed to. And all the, for its historical society, we, 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 yes, no, and it had to be redeveloped. I think option one was best here. Let Wood County, town association, county association, league committees, all this. We used to be able to go over to the median, but the asset's too small now. But I think I'll just put it there if they want to let that building fine. I don't think this is a fair issue because all I've known about both fair boards is they're always fighting about buildings and who owns the buildings, who don't, who should fix it. So I just think, yes, I'd be glad to go to the people I know that could contribute money and build an expo building for Wood County and Marshfield, of course, and Marshfield. I think it'd be a money maker for the county, that helps us a lot, replacing all these other buildings.
I know as we go forward, we have a million questions over months, but is there others out there with questions? Tom?
Bill's right, years ago, a lot of the buildings were not kept up. That's changed over the years. That's not the case anymore. We borrowed money, I think we just ended up paying that off a year or two ago now. And what that was done, the money that the county and city gets paid for the loan, and we got stuff fixed up, and there's still more. But when you've got fifty, sixty-year-old buildings, there's not much you can do with some of those. So I just want to put that to rest, that we do look at fixing buildings up. And this is, this is a key thing here to have, to have all these shows. And we're not just talking once in a while, we're talking to have a lot of shows, they're entertainment, which we don't have. The closest place is Wausau with the Grand Theater, there's probably others around. But the other thing that Marshfield has, it's centrally located, so we could get a lot of shows that people don't have to travel so far. And that's part of, part of the reason I think that we, you know, we have to talk a lot about this yet, but it's something that I think is needed. Discussion was, is how did that come about, expo building? And I'm not trying to take credit for it, but I met with Dale, the fair manager, and I said, Dale, you know, if you get rain during the fair, you lose your entertainment. And I said, too bad we don't have a building to do that. Well, then he told me, he said, well, actually, if we get a building like that, we want to use that building during the fair as another expo building, because he's got people coming out of the woodwork mill that want to put stuff in these buildings for the fair. But then off-fair time, and they do have a number of cattle shows now. I mean, it could be better yet, and they're trying, and they will get it. So, you know, you can, like I said, you can afford the fair. Now, last year, we, they thought that, oh, boy, it's a wonderful year because it did rain. And that was good, you know, that was good, but then they had to cancel one event because it was too darn hot. So, but that's, that's the reason, and I'm all for this, and we got to look at it and do it right.
Well, we certainly started the conversation, and, you know, I'm sure that they would invite anybody who wanted to go to those meetings to attend and gather more information as we move forward. There are more questions for Dan while he's up here? Like you said, it's in your documents, you can look through that. They're going to be looking for input, I'm sure, as well as, and I'm sure you can get more from the community up in Marshfield, you get some obviously from the county address team.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I might not need it. So with regard to the older buildings, do you guys have a projected sum of how much it will cost to do some of these things you need to do to the building? I mean, it's kind of like an old man, you can give him pills and fix it for a while, and it'll work until he does it. So.
Do you have a number?
No.
You're talking about the buildings or me?
That wasn't really the scope of this effort, was to evaluate existing buildings and see what it would take to bring them up, because you're still dealing with a lot of buildings that have space that's not continuous, and it just is not as efficient to hold events when you have stuff scattered out in a bunch of different buildings. So that really wasn't looked at as a viable alternative to say, well, let's just upgrade the space we have because it's not efficient space.
Well, I guess, Dan, appreciate the conversation, and this will continue for more than a couple of weeks, and we'll keep working on it. Because we've been, you know, we've really been working on this in, to some extent, for many years, you know, how do we handle this problem where we go. So I thank you very much for the time spent and the presentation. Thank you. All right. So that brings me to the end of the agenda. I do have a couple of things here. I talked to a number of the committee chairs. I asked if there would be any objection to moving our, our next county board regularly scheduled meeting, which is with the National Association of Counties Convention, which I will be attending the others. And I didn't have any objection at that time to moving this to July 23rd. Does anybody have a problem with that? We lose that first week, to some extent anyway, with the Fourth of July. I don't think there's any problem with that, so if there isn't, Wayne?
I will be in Maine July 23rd. I could try to.
Join, yeah, if you can join in, we're back, that's great.
That day, though, is our international business meeting, and I think we interfere.
I think you're safe that we won't be going on an expo, expo. No, okay. All right, so we'll do that, then we'll go to the 23rd. And the last thing for adjourn, I want to just personally thank everybody out there who accommodated some meeting changes for me in times over the last month or so as I dealt with some family issues. So department heads, committee members and others who said, yeah, we can move an hour later, an hour earlier, a day or two different directions. So thank you very much, and thank you to all of us who reached out, appreciate that as well. Is there anything else that needs to come before us today? I will then declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.